Work session, regular meeting, May 14th, 2019. Calling the work session to order, items for review and discussion. A is a storm water management program plan, and that is?
That will be Celia Duran, our Public Works Director, that will be giving that this evening. This program plan presentation is in conformance with the requirements set out by the APWA for reaccreditation, and this is to give you an overview of what our plan looks like ahead. So, Celia, take it away.
Thank you. So, as Alexa said, I'm going to give you a quick discussion on our storm water management program plan. So, we're one of 162 regulated municipal separate storm sewer systems, or MS4s, in Missouri. So, we originally got our MS4 permit in March 2003, and it was reapproved in 2017. And as part of that plan, we're required to develop a storm water management program plan, and we need to report our progress annually to MDNR. So, we have, we originally had, our first plan was in 2003, and it's updated every five years. So, we had one in 2008, 2013, and now this is for our 2018 permit cycle. I know it's 2019, but it's for that cycle. And as part of our requirements, the plan must have public input, and so that's why I'm presenting this to you tonight, so that if you have any comments on the plan, or the public has any comments, there will be a 10-day review period, and it will be on our website following the meeting, and you can submit your comments to that email, or you can contact me at any time. So, every plan must have the following minimum control measures. There's six of these measures, and I'm going to talk about each one of those. So, public education and outreach. Currently, we have a number of brochures online and at the City Hall Annex. It talks about items such as the use of lawn chemicals, vehicle washing, how to dispose of pit waste, how to handle your yard waste, all to prevent all that debris of going into the storm sewer system. And as you know, we recently adopted a, adopted stream program. Our first cleanup was March 30th, and we had a large showing of citizens and staff and various civic groups. The South Grand Regional Watershed Alliance Stream Team helped provide materials and equipment and organized us, and then the alliance provided the food. So, it was a great turnout, and we, it's estimated that we picked up about a ton of trash. So, that all helps, you know, keep our streams clean and keeps that from going farther down into the rivers. We're also beginning, as part of this plan, a storm drain marking program, and I think we may have had that before, because you can see on some of our old inlets, we have some stencils of fish. And so, really, the point is to put on stencils or some kind of marker to say, "No dumping" or "Goes to river," so that people realize, you know, a lot of, back in the day, people would dump oil or, you know, things like that, or even leaves in there. And so, this is an awareness to, you know, don't dump into our storm system. We also have some outreach where the Boy Scouts will come to the wastewater treatment plant and have a presentation. We'll talk about our inflow and infiltration program to prevent storm water into our sewer system. So, all of those are part of our outreach. And if you have any questions, feel free to ask as we go. Public involvement and participation. Part of that is public meetings and presenting to the council, as I am tonight, and then we present some of our, you know, storm water goals to the Public Work Committee. Recently, before the adoption of the Adopt a Stream, you know, we talked about that program. And then we'll continue to have our public participation with, you know, input on our plan tonight, the Adopt a Stream program, as well as the storm drain marking program. And we continue to, you know, look at other ways to kind of involve the public and have them participate. Three is our illicit discharge detection and elimination program. As you know, illicit discharge is, illicit discharge into the storm water is any non-storm water discharge that goes, and there's a number of things that are allowed, like irrigation water and non-chlorinated swimming pool water, but there's a lot of things that aren't allowed. And so, we monitor that, and we have an ordinance for that. An illicit discharge into a sanitary sewer is like a sump, a sump pump from somebody's house or a floor drain, and so we also take a look at that, because any additional storm water that gets into our sanitary system, as you know, it goes with the treatment plan, and then we have to spend more money paying to treat that when it's, you know, we don't really need to treat the storm water. So, part of this program, we inspect 15 outfalls annually, and those outfalls are on our city border, so we take a look to make sure there's no illicit discharges. We inspect our projects to ensure no illicit discharges. For example, when we do a sanitary sewer project, we'll take a look at sump pumps tied into the sewer, floor drains, and you'd be surprised at what, you know, what people have connected into our system. We also have the infiltration inflow abatement program, as I talked about. So, that is trying to line our sewers to prevent illicit discharges, so that we have less storm water going into our system. Illicit discharge is also considered garbage, rubbish, and other waste, so that Adopt a Stream program helps control that, and then we monitor the effectiveness of the program. Number four is our construction site storm water runoff control, and part of that is, of course, we have our codes that prohibit dumping, but we also review any new development plan or construction plan that comes in the door, and we have, we look for erosion and sediment control measures on the plans. So, that's when you see the silt fence, you see the wattles, and you see a number of different options to prevent storm water and erosion and sediment from going off the site. And, you know, that's always a difficult thing, because we have our requirements, they show on the plans, but they don't always follow up right after rain. So, often, in a big, heavy rain, it'll bring the silt fence down, it'll wash out, we'll go back and tell the contractor, they'll sometimes get on it right away and sometimes take their time. So, that's something that we continue to work on, but we do inspect that and force that. And then, we require our contracts to conform with our storm water pollution prevention plan permits from the state, as well as a land disturbance plan or permit. Our post-construction storm water management and new development, we've adopted the Mark APW Manual of Best Management Practice for Storm Water Quality. That is used in review and requirements for all our developments, so they have to address water quality. So, they may provide a bi-retention basin, a wetland, a detention basin, green infrastructure or swales, and so that's all included. And then, long-term maintenance responsibility is designated on the Platten Plan, and, you know, we've had some concerns with an HOA, it's designated, and then they don't form or they dissolve, and so then, who maintains that? So, that's something ongoing that we need to address. And we do maintain an inventory of the private storm water quality features, and one of our goals is that we want to establish a third-party inspection program, so that we need to go back and take a look at all of these private basins and take a look at, are they really functioning? And eventually, requiring the developer to perform a thirty, third-party inspection every year to make sure they're still functioning. But that's not something that we've done yet, but that's one of our goals. And then, six is our pollution prevention, good housekeeping. And so, we have yearly training for Public Works. All of our operations facilities have their own training, and they're really looking at good house, good housekeeping. So, they get trained on, you know, store your chemicals inside, keep, you know, keep your areas clean. If there's an oil spill, they have kits to clean those up, so don't let them get into the drain or into the creeks and things like that. So, we're continuing to work on that. And part of our good housekeeping is our street sweeping program as well. So, that's the end of my short presentation, and as I mentioned, we do have a public review period for the next 10 days, so please contact me, or please send emails or comments to the email and take a look at our website, and you can take a look at the plan.
Questions, comments? Councilman Clark?
Have we thought about doing more of a regional detention pond area, instead of doing like the ones in a subdivision? So, like, I guess Summit Hills, is that Somerset Hills? Is the regional detention for Belray and Somerset Hills? As we grow and move south or west, I mean, can we not look at more regional stuff like that, instead of these ones that aren't being maintained, like we talked about with Hardy Metal, or Herald Estates, or Hardy Meadows, whatever that one is over by us?
There's a lot of them.
Yeah, there's a lot of them.
Well, Markey Lake was part of our regional detention plan that they developed, you know, and it's great to have regional, you just have to have, identify an area and make sure the property owners that are going to develop are all buy-in and pay for that, and then we set up, you know, a program that, so you can buy into it. So, that's always something for us definitely to consider as we move south or to undeveloped areas.
Well, just enough, we had something put together for the future development, like, hey, this is where water's going, so we need to make sure when these subdivisions being built, that we know exactly where a regional basin would be, and not just these dry ponds or these dry areas that don't always work, so.
That's a goal. We haven't done that program yet, but that, at some point, we want to take a look at all the basins and make sure that they're functioning, and that would be part of our review, is taking a look at all of that and where could we have regional opportunities.
Well, segue off of that for me. Those future concerns I had on my list, and one of our regional detentions is out at Coles, which is the Markey, and how that's sliding down the hill, and that's a real concern that every time we have these massive rains, it looks to me like it's collapsing completely down, and it's giving us, losing a lot of our volume.
Right.
But that is a huge regional detention, of course, for Oil Creek, which we know has been a real problem area. So, the weather patterns, are we studying weather patterns? I know that you've got that device that, that really is helpful. To me, it was one of the best things I've ever seen, where you know how much rain per hour, and what did Michael say on one of our last rains? It was raining so hard, it was in a, up to the...
Six inches over the number of days and...
Was it a 200 or a 500, 200-year flood?
Hundred year.
The equivalent, in the middle of the night.
Right, and so, we have gotten a rain gauge, so it tracks all of that, so we can take a look instead of guessing, oh, that was a big rain. You know, we can take a look at the information on there and actually say, yeah, that was a hundred year, yeah, that was a 200 year, so.
Another one I had on here, I just wrote down, was all the leaves that go down that people don't pick up. What, what does that do with the process? How, how does it, I mean, what happens? I mean, I see people, I've watched here in Old Town where leaves that aren't left, and they're three foot deep in a ditch, and then after a heavy rain, I see it maybe two houses further down or in the middle of the street. What's the effect of people that don't pick up their lawn stuff?
Yeah, it clogs our drains, it clogs our inlets, it can prevent, you know, it could prevent blockages depending on how much, how much, and we actually have an ordinance that, you know, we can fine people for not picking up their leaves or, you know, pushing them off into the street. How do you determine which leaf goes where, and do you want to do that? But we have all these complaints about leaves, but, you know, we need to, I think we have a brochure that we need, you know, to inform people more that, hey, you need to bag your leaves, because this does cause a problem downstream.
And you hit on that, too, your mow clippings. I saw people on Facebook hitting on that, too, last week, that what's, what's the effect? I mean, it's the same principle, but what is the code on that?
Yeah, it's not allowed, and it's just a matter of trying to determine, you know, we can, we can respond to, you know, to complaints and investigate, and if we can determine, we can find, but I think it's an overall education for people to realize, you know, and to other people to say, hey, you need to bag that, you need to put that away, it doesn't go in our storm, and it clogs our system.
I and I, you mentioned, what do you think percent is the I and I and the problems that compound in our city when we have high rains? What would, do you have any kind of grasp on?
We have studied all our basins. I guess there's been a lot of I and I worked in over the year and a lot more to do. We recently just lined our West Interceptor, which is about $1.3 million, and we're getting ready to do flow monitoring to say, this is our reduction, but we've already seen a big reduction at our wastewater treatment plant. I know some of the basins are a 14-to-1 surcharge, so when it rains, you know, some of our old infrastructure, it just seeps into our pipes through holes in the pipes or joints, and it's can be 14 times as much water into our sanitary that goes to our plant. So, there's a nine-to-one, a 14-to-one. We have an aggressive program, but it's just, you know, it costs us money, and we're trying to chip away at it every year and focusing on certain basins where we know the highest surcharge is.
Councilman Clark?
I just have one more about the regional detention ponds. And you guys, I'm new, so forgive me if I've brought up something that you guys already discussed in the past, but Oil Creek seems like a big problem in our area. So, is there any way that we can do a cooperation with Springdale, maybe make that lake bigger or deeper, so we contain, retain more water coming down off that hill? I mean, it just seems like maybe we can stop the flow in the pond there.
So, right now, we're working with Springdale, because I guess that it, I don't know when, but they changed the outfall, so it really isn't retaining much, and so it's just flowing right through, and it's causing a lot of erosion. So, we're working with them now on a fix for that. As far as regional, I'm not sure that that would work, but that's something that we're just talking to them about, and they're trying to work on.
Like you said, it just all flows right through there.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think it's a foot deep enough.
Yeah.
Any more, so.
Yeah, and that's some...
A couple of years ago, we did something with one over by Hillcrest.
Argus.
Argus. We did a cooperation with that subdivision, just to help hold more water, but...
Other questions or comments? Councilman Lathrop?
I have one. You talked about these retention ponds that are not, not doing what they're supposed to do now, you know, they're old, and you said you're going to figure out some way to have them redo them? Is that what we're talking about?
That's a goal for the future. I think we need to look at our detention basins and see how they're functioning, it's just, you know, we need to study, we need to do a study of all the detention basins and see what we can do to really prevent more, you know, storm water and the flooding in Oil Creek. It's just, it's a matter of funding, so we just need to make that a priority and fund it. We've got a lot of other storm water, as you know, concerns right now, but that is something that is a desire for us to do, and it's just a matter of funding. And we actually talked to a consultant the other day. You're talking about looking at detention basins, and it looks like they're not filling up and working, and what one of the consultants said, they've been studying all the rains in Kansas City and found out that they're using the SCS curve to kind of determine where the, you know, you have the curve that shows the peak of the storm, and really, the SCS curve doesn't work for Kansas City storms, so that's why you're not seeing some of these detention basins filling up as they should, because the peak comes through before that. And so, anyway, they're looking at that, and so that's information that, you know, we can look at in the future to look at our basins.
You know, Councilwoman Peak and I drive around, take pictures of the detentions that work and the ones that don't work, and it's amazing that, that some of them, of course, are, are over the top.
Yeah.
They work until they're, so which means what? We need more detention in that area, if they're going over the top, but some of them are just nothing.
And some of, and they design the outfall just to let it blow through, so they're really not getting the capacity.
That's what I was thinking about, too, yeah.
And so, we've got a lot of, a myriad of issues on our detention, on the private detention basins that we need to look at.
Super. Other comments or questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Celia.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. With that, are you, anything else for review and discussion?
No, we have no other items for work session this evening, Mayor.
I'd like to adjourn the work session. Now, we're going to call the regular meeting to order. At this time, we'd ask Councilman Van Winkle to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America, the Constitution of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Consent agenda. One motion, non-debatable to prove, recommendations noted. Any member of the council may ask for an item to be taken from consent agenda for discussion in separate action.
Let's do a roll call, please, first.
Do a roll call first.
Mayor Davis?
Here.
Councilman Savage?
Here.
Councilman Lathrop?
Here.
Councilman Tretzel?
Here.
Councilman Van Winkle?
Here.
Councilman Clark?
Here.
Councilwoman Davidson?
Here.
Councilwoman Peak?
Here.
Okay, we've already read the consent agenda, non-debatable, approved, recommendations noted. Any member of the council may ask for an item to be taken from the consent agenda for discussion in separate action.
Resume.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. Councilman Clark?
No, I don't have anything to take away, I just, I think there's a name change. I think George's last name is Shrum, and not Shroom. I think the R and U should be switched.
I've kind of thought of him as a shroom sometimes, but, so it's Shrum, did you catch that one?
It's George Shrum.
Thank you.
If I have a vote.
Okay, any others? Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed? That motion passes. Okay. Wow. At this time, Chief, you want to come up? We're going to do our proclamation for Peace Officers Memorial Day and Police Week.
This is all right, we've got two of our officers here. Please, get up here, guys, let's go. Come on.
Front and center.
Bashful, aren't they?
Paying attention to having some more action.
Checked out.
Come on, Lieutenant.
Yeah.
No gauntlet here or anything, right?
You know, I can't help but notice, you too, you too, John. If you haven't noticed, it's Chief's high and shirt matches Councilwoman Peak's hair.
That's a compliment.
I need to get the microphone down.
Okay, we're going to hold that, Chief, thanks. Again, this proclamation of 2019's Peace Officers Memorial Day and Police Week, whereas to recognize National Police Week 2019, to honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy, and whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week, and whereas the members of the Belton Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms and citizens of Belton, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression, and whereas the men and women of the Belton Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now, therefore, I, Jeff Davis, Mayor of the City of Belton, call upon all the citizens of Belton, upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations observed the week of May 12th through the 18th, 2019, as Police Week, in which all of our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, and who by faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities. I further call upon citizens of Belton to observe Wednesday, May 15th, 2019, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who, through their courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice and service to their community, or have become disabled in the performance of duties, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. In witness whereof, I have hereon set my hand and caused the seal of the city to be affixed in the City of Belton, Missouri, this day, May 14th, in the year of our Lord, 2019. And thank you, guys, very much, we appreciate you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Chief. The National Police Week and National Police Memorial Day actually began with, sure, began with President Kennedy. He was the first one to designate May 15th to be National Police Memorial Day, so it's been going on a long time now. We do appreciate the jobs that all of our officers do and all of the officers nationwide do. Unfortunately, this year, there were three names from our region that were added to the list of names at the memorial in Washington, DC, officer from Clinton, and two officers from Kansas City, Kansas. So, we want to remember them and their families at this time. Also, I also passed out to those of you on the dais, a lapel pin. If you don't have a lapel, you can still wear the pin. It's a thin blue line, it's for Law Enforcement Memorial, and we would appreciate your consideration there, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you so much.
Good stuff, Chief. You cannot take police for granted, and we appreciate all they do, in these trying times especially, and it's, they've done a really good job, and we appreciate them. Next, we have Mark Miller. Mark, are you here today? You going to come up to the program, and I have, is he going to read his address? Or do I, we already have it on here? Okay.
Actually, I also, on top of those two addresses, I'm president of the homeowners' satiation over in one of the wards. I represent 365 individual homeowners when I'm up here. All right? We all know the mess that the current recycling and trash contract has gotten the City of Belton into with gyms. Across the interstate, the city to our east is voting tonight to cancel that contract that they have without cause. My recommendation is this city council does the same thing, because right now, you're holding the citizens accountable for gyms and a service that they're paying for, i.e. the taxpayers, and not receiving. My question to you is, are you going to issue a refund or a credit, because the citizens are paying for it, but they're not getting that service? Other questions from you?
Well, we'll just have you report, but...
That's all I have to say.
All right, I appreciate it, and we've had a couple of conversations before, and how's your HOA doing?
Well, right now, we're actually doing pretty good, but we did very well before as an HOA, when we had our own trash contract, before the city...
Okay, how many members was that again, three?
365 homeowners. That doesn't count individuals, that's individual homes.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Okay. Get caught up here. Okay. Motion approving both readings of Bill Number 2019-26.
An ordinance approving the reappropriation and revision of the City of Belton fiscal year 2020 adopted city budget.
Motion and a second. Discussion. City manager, the note underneath, do we need to read that, or?
I...
Yes.
I have, I would like to, to talk about this item. So, this, this ordinance is the budget amendment that is done every year at the beginning of the fiscal year to do a cash carryover true-up. And so, what we do is we estimate what the cash balance is going to be on the last day of the fiscal year. The way that we estimate that is we do estimated revenues for each fund while we're preparing the, the next fiscal year budget, and then we also have all the department heads turn in expected expenditures, and we're usually a lot closer than we are when we, when we first adopt the budget halfway into the year, because we're doing it with six months of experience. And so, of course, we don't know exactly what's going to happen at the end of the year, and this budget amendment trues up to have our cash carryover be exactly where, where we ended the year. And so, at your dais, we passed out the fiscal year 2019 financial report, and I think a lot of people, I know on social media, my interactions with citizens on social media, a lot of people are very, very interested in, in the general fund budget, and the reason that they're so interested in it is because it provides a lot of important services, specifically public safety, so that's where fire and emergency medical services and police are paid from, plus an additional, our court, our jail, administration, code enforcement, all of those services that the city provides that don't have a dedicated funding source. And so, I thought that it would be a good time, before we approve this budget amendment, to kind of talk about where we anticipated that we would end the year in 2019 with our budget, and then where we actually ended the year. So, I did this little presentation to, you guys have the documents in front of you, but the citizens at home that might be watching this presentation on the cable TV channel or on the internet after tonight, they won't have those documents, so that's the reason that we're doing this little presentation. So, we're talking just about the general fund, and the way that we estimated what our cash carryover was going to be at the beginning of the year, what we estimated it to be was, we thought we would end the year with $2.7 million of cash. what we estimated it to be was, we thought we would end the year with $2.7 million of cash in the general fund. What we actually ended up with was 3 million, 3.4 million. And that's a difference of $700,000, basically. So, for our estimates, we estimated 15 point, $15,566,000 in revenues and $16.6 million, basically, of expenditures. And that is how we, why we estimated the $1 million shortfall of revenues over expenses. So the estimated deficit, if you want to know, like, where that can be found, you look for revenues, it's that red box. And then for expenditures, it's that red box. So it's in the budget that is on our website. So all citizens can always find all of our financial information, our audited financial statements, and our budgets are on our city website, so that anyone can go and look anytime. So that is where we estimated that we were gonna have a shortfall in fiscal year 2019 at the end of the year of a million dollars. From the March 2019 monthly financial report, which you guys have at your dais, on this page, you can see that our actual revenues that came in were 15, was $15,683,000. And our actual expenditures were $15,968,000. And so that gave us a deficit in the general fund of $285,000. So we ended up with $739,000 more than we anticipated. And the reason is, is because of revenues. We ended up with $117,000 more in revenues than we had anticipated. And just so you know, that is less than a percent off of what we estimated. So, that is phenomenal. And then for expenditures, our expenditures were 3.7% under what we had budgeted, or what we had, our department estimate was. And that is $621,000. And really, the majority of that came from open positions in the general fund. So this year, we actually had, in just the general fund, 34 employees left. And so we had savings from those 34 employees leaving. We had some vacancies for quite an extended period of time. But then after we do new hires, we have savings from loggers, because we don't, you have to work for six months before the city starts paying in loggers' retirement benefits for you. And then, we also have a savings, because there's a waiting period for health, dental, life insurance, things like that. So, the majority of that savings came from those 34 employees that we had leave during the year. And that is quite high compared to what we typically have had. That was 19% of our general fund employees. Typically, we have 12% or less leave. So, and I think that that was just, we have a market right now where we have very low unemployment, and people can go other places for jobs. And that was before we had went in and done our market study and adjusted the pay plan for this year.
Sure. Sheila, when you said they, we had this many leave, did that include retirements as well?
Yes.
Okay, so there was, it seemed to me we had quite a few retirements this past year.
We did.
Okay, thank you.
And that's kind of, all of our other funds, you know, those funds all are restricted. So you can only use the money that come into the other city funds for those specific purposes. And the general fund, not only does it support a lot of city services and a lot of very important city services, but it is also the fund that is going to pay in the case of an emergency or if there's a shortfall in one of those other funds. And that is why we spend so much time and look so carefully at that general fund. Because that general fund is vital to the city. So that's where we ended up. Over the last two years, our cash balance has dropped almost $662,000, and $322,000 of that was from, during this year. So, that public safety sales tax that went into effect April 1st, very necessary. And when, we don't anticipate that we're going to continue having people leaving. We have had a lot of long-term employees that have been with the city for many, many years, turnover. And now, we're looking at probably going back down to where we're not having that turnover in future years. And so we need to make sure that we continue budgeting all the salary and benefits for each employee, so that we don't end up with an unexpected shortfall.
On your projections, you had 21.23 in the general fund percent. Is that where you projected it to be?
No, I projected it lower. And I projected it lower based on our estimated revenues and expenses that we had done when we first started the budget process in September and October.
And we've talked about this, I know Councilwoman Peak and I bug you about the numbers a lot, but on the true-up, on the cash carryover, you were pretty close on your estimates, and I think you get lucky sometimes, but, because we always call that a what, a, not a Ouija board, but a crystal ball.
A crystal ball. Yeah, I have been extremely lucky in my revenue projections since I've been here, and probably God's gonna take that little gift away, but it's a guess. There's nothing, I end up low in some things and high in some other things, and then it all ends up evening out. And this year, it was less than a 1%, I was less than 1% off. And it was the same for the prior year, so...
So in game, what are we expecting now for our general fund budget at the end, the percent? What are we saying?
Well, it will be, it's higher now. So when we ended this fiscal year, our general fund percent was 21%.
Questions, anybody else?
And we have it budgeted in this current year, that that, it will go down a little bit because of capital, but what we made sure and certain, that we were making sure that our operating expenditures were equal with our operating, with our current revenues.
Questions or comments so far? Got a motion and a second? Seeing none?
I'm sorry, can I say one other thing? I do want to talk about what we're doing with this, what we're doing with some of this carryover in the general fund. Because I think it's important for council to know. So, this carryover is not, because we saved it by vacant positions, that's not expected in future years. So we would not typically want to add positions to spend this money. Because when you add personnel and you add positions, you will be adding operating expenses every single year, and we don't necessarily have the revenues coming in to support that. In our budget amendment that is put in here, there is...
You can find that on page 63 of the agenda.
Page 63 of the agenda, included in this budget amendment is a code enforcement officer. It's a new position, and the reason that that is okay is because we have the money this year from the carryover, from the excess carryover. And in future years, Belton Marketplace TIF is going to be paid off this year. And that is going to produce an extra $60,000-plus a year in the general fund when that TIF retires. And so we had talked about that we were going to add a code enforcement next year. I know that was a very important thing, and you guys really had asked for that, but there wasn't money in the current year budget. Now there is, because there was savings from the vacancies last year. And we know that we will have a revenue source going forward, because we know that Belton Marketplace TIF is going to expire and be paid off this year.
So Sheila, if you don't mind, I'm gonna insert here. I wouldn't be making this recommendation to the council to do this if we weren't seeing an ongoing increase in our revenues being available next year by the marketplace TIF being paid. And so those dollars would be coming to us. If this was, as Sheila's saying, this was, this is a one-time funding. And you all told me at budget time, you truly wanted to see an additional code enforcement person. We just couldn't find the dollars for it. Now being able to get through the year and true up the budget and balance it, I know that this is important to you, so that's why we've put this here, is to be able to add that here. And then, next year, the dollars to pay for that position will come from that TIF project that's paid off.
And then there's one other item that was a one-time expense that is added into this amendment. It's for the general fund, and it's for a land use map.
The, and I'm gonna expand on that. The council will recall that we had the consultant come in that did the housing study. And one of the things that he talked about was that our comprehensive plan was very old, and he really advised us to update it. And so Dave and I sat down and we talked about it and said, does it make sense at this point where we really are looking at the projects that we have going on in the city? What is, what can we do without spending a couple hundred thousand dollars on a comprehensive plan that gets us the biggest bang for our buck? And as I sat down and talked to Dave, as our lead planning director, he said, "I think really what you could do, you've really already got good bone structure already." We've done the North Scott Corridor Plan, we've done the housing study, we've got other things lined up to be able to help us as we're going forward. We've got these large projects. He said, "What really needs to be updated is the land use map, because it's older, so as you have developers that are looking at it and want to be able to plan for the future, that's one area that we think is truly antiquated, and it needs to be updated." So, we talked with consensus that did the North Scott Overlay District, the corridor plan. And we think that we can get that for anywhere from $35,000 to $50,000. So if you look at the bottom of page 63, that's what that line item is there, it's $50,000. Do I think we're going to use all that? No, I don't. And if not, it goes back to the bottom line of the general fund. But I wanted to be able to have adequate dollars to be able to go out to companies to be able to take a look at that. So instead of doing a comprehensive plan, we would pare that down greatly and look at the land use map.
Okay, along that, we were talking about Marketplace. Town Center comes off next year?
Yes.
And what will those numbers look like?
So when Town Center drops off, it will be about an additional $300,000 a year for the general fund.
How's that affect all the other jurisdictions, like schools and libraries and all that?
They will end up getting more money from property taxes.
How many TIFs does that make that we will have left, then?
Four.
Four, is that what you had too? That's what I thought, I wanted to make sure. Okay, so that'll bring in $300,000 more?
Yes, but that is two years into the future.
Okay. How long has that TIF been out there?
I believe 1996.
No.
2006.
Did you do that one, Councilman Clark?
The original TIF was $9 million, and we did that in 2001. And then Mayor Gregory in four or five extended it to 23 million or something, to build a road to nowhere.
Which road?
One in front of Menards.
Oh, that one.
That's what I always call it, the road to nowhere, because it used to just die.
But it's somewhere now.
Look at us go.
Yeah, it's going down.
Okay, so that'll leave us with four TIFs then? Okay.
And Mr. Mayor, if I can have everyone turn to page 64, the next page? So as we're looking at that $700,000 that was available, we would be looking at adding the code enforcement person. We would be looking at updating the land use map. And then, the very top line item on that is $500,000 that would be transferred to the general capital. And one of the things that I've spoken with the mayor about is to utilize those dollars in general capital that would be for the Peculiar Drive realignment. The city received a grant for that project, requires matching dollars. We were planning to use matching dollars from the TDD. The TDD will have those dollars available, but not for another possible year or so. And so I, it's necessary to have those dollars set aside, so that as we're progressing with that project, we have the funding there, because that's one of the requirements of the grant, is to have the funding. And so the funding would be there with the full intention of using TDD dollars as they're available, but they're just not at this time.
What happens if we don't meet the need or spend the money on a grant and that time lapses? What are our chances of getting another?
If you don't conform with the requirements of the grant, the likelihood of getting another grant are slim to none. It's very difficult, there's, and so there's a lot of processes through it that, a lot of nuances in a grant, depending upon how it's written and the provisions, it's like a contract, there's terms and conditions in it.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. We had a motion and a second? No other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes.
Move for a second reading?
Second.
Motion and a second for a second reading, any discussion? Seeing none. I will start. Motion approving the second reading of Bill Number 2019-26.
An ordinance approving the reappropriation and revision of the City of Belton Fiscal Year 2020 adopted city budget.
Second.
Motion and second, discussion. Seeing none.
Councilman Lathrop?
Aye.
Councilman Savage?
Aye.
Councilman Van Winkle?
Aye.
Councilman Tretzel?
Aye.
Councilwoman Davidson?
Aye.
Councilman Clark?
Aye.
Councilman Finn?
Aye.
Mayor Davis?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peak?
Aye.
No, I don't think we did.
Yeah, I think we missed.
I was looking at Councilman Savage, he always picks that, let's go back.
We missed the middle.
On the middle one, on the motion.
Yeah, you had the motion in the second from Gary Lathrop and Ryan.
The motion for a second.
Motion and second, you got?
Second reading.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passed. And then, the motion approving the second reading of Bill Number 2019-26. Do we need to go ahead and read it again?
Would you like to do it again?
Okay.
An ordinance approving the reappropriation and revision of the City of Belton Fiscal Year 2020 adopted city budget.
Second. Motion and a second, any discussion? Let's try it again.
Councilman Lathrop?
Aye.
Councilman Savage?
Aye.
Councilman Van Winkle?
Aye.
Councilman Tretzel?
Aye.
Councilwoman Davidson?
Aye.
Councilman Clark?
Aye.
Councilman Finn?
Aye.
Mayor Davis?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peak?
Aye.
That motion passes. A B, motion approving both readings of Bill Number 2019-27.
An ordinance approving the final plat of Southview Commerce Center South, second plat located northwest one quarter and southwest one quarter, Section 1, T46N, R33W, in the City of Belton, Cass County, Missouri, and authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to sign the plat for recording with the Cass County Recorder's Office.
Second.
Motion and second, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Move for a second reading?
Second.
Motion and a second for a second reading, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. B, a motion approving the second reading of Bill Number 2019-27.
An ordinance approving the final plat of Southview Commerce Center South, second plat located northwest one quarter and southwest one quarter, Section 1, T46N, R33W, in the City of Belton, Cass County, Missouri, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sign the plat for recording with the Cass County Recorder's Office.
Second. Motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none.
Councilman Finn?
Aye.
Councilman Savage?
Aye.
Councilman Lathrop?
Aye.
Councilman Tretzel?
Aye.
Councilwoman Davidson?
Aye.
Councilman Clark?
Aye.
Councilman Van Winkle?
Aye.
Mayor Davis? Mayor Davis?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peak?
Aye.
That, that motion passes. Okay, next. We have resolutions, do we have any resolutions?
Not this evening.
None? City Council liaison reports, uh, Councilwoman?
I can't wait.
Davidson, yes?
Yes. Uh, Big Bounce America comes to Wallace Park on Friday through Sunday, May seventeen through nineteen, featuring the world's largest bouncy castle. It's the only stop in the KC metro area, so you don't want to miss it. Sign up now for one of the available spots. Join us for an Under the Sea Princess Party with Ariel on Saturday, June first from two to four PM, at High Blue Wellness. It's for three to eight-year-olds. There will be a princess, there will be princess crafts, princess treats, a princess parade, a visit from Ariel and more. Cost is fifteen dollars and princess attire is welcome. There will be, um, time at the end for photos with Ariel too. Space is limited, so register early to ensure a spot. Are you ready to bring back a game that millions of families have played in their backyard for decades? Yes. Not everybody all at once. Get your family and friends together and join us for the two thousand nineteen Summer Fest Whiffle Ball Tournament on Saturday, June fifteenth in Memorial Park. You won't want to miss this fun. The tournament will start at eleven AM with the championship scheduled to start no later than five PM. The cost is fifteen dollars per team with a maximum of five players per team. The winning team will receive medals for each player. For more information, you can contact Brian W. at beltonparks.org. I expect us to have a team. Uh, May is National Water Safety Month and that's a great time to start preparing for summer water activities. Whether you spend time at the outdoor water park, indoor aquatic center, or a public lake, safety is always the top priority. So it's the perfect time to sign up for swim lessons. Uh, High Blue offers lessons for all ages from six months to adults, including group, private, and semi-private, as well as adult only. Visit our website for more information and to see what class best fits your needs. Are you ready to make a splash this summer? Season passes are now on sale at the outdoor water park. Purchase your season pass by Wednesday, May fifteenth, that's tomorrow, and get two free individual guest passes to the water park. Season passes are available at High Blue Wellness Center. The water park will open noon on Saturday, May twenty-fifth. Hours are noon to seven PM each day. It's the same great place and the same great price as last year. Park attractions include speed slide, tornado slide, cargo crossing, Action River, and more. A big shout-out to Keller Williams Realty. On Thursday, May ninth, twenty-five volunteers from Keller Williams chose Memorial Park for their Red Day, which stands for Renew, Energize, and Donate Community Project. The group spread about forty yards of mulch throughout the park to help beautify the arboretum. Last week, the Missouri Department of Conservation did a fish survey at Cleveland Lake here. Um, the survey is the first step in establishing a plan to manage the fish population in the lake. And then last but not least, plans are being finalized for Summer Fest and we promise that you're not going to want to miss this full day of fun, Saturday, June fifteenth from two to, two to ten PM. It's one day only this year. There will be live music by Cheap Thrills, Games, and Inflatables, Food Trucks, a Beer Garden, Whiffle Ball Tournament, fireworks, and more. Inside and outside Memorial Station, there will be several local craft vendors with lots of great shopping opportunities. And the first two hundred people can receive a voucher for a two-dollar admission to the outdoor water park during Summer Fest. The water park will stay open until nine PM Saturday night. And remember to bring a lawn chair or blanket to enjoy the concert and fireworks, but no coolers, please.
Thank you. While we're at that, we got mayor's communication. The play at the theater next door, I'm trying to think which side, it'd be this side. Uh, Councilwoman Davidson, when does, uh, On Golden Pond, when does that start? Does anybody know?
I think it's mid-June or early June, I'm not sure, I'd have to.
So it's not like next week, though?
I don't think so.
Okay, so that's the Henry Fonda movie, you remember, and his daughter? Great story, and Hepburn, so this is the play. So want to encourage everybody to go to the, are you gonna look that up while I'm saying other things? Okay. Yeah, both of you are. So with that, with mayor's communications, did get to go to the Chamber Golf Tournament yesterday and it was spectacular. It was the, the best, they told me today that, uh, for the end of it, that it was Diane Huckshorn and the Chamber had the best golf tournament they've ever had. It was pretty spectacular, the drop that we saw the firefighters have on the extension ladder and they had a target down below and they dropped the balls out on a designated area and it had a target and one golf ball landed right in the middle. And it was pretty spectacular and it was, uh, Kathy Morton was the winner of the five hundred dollar prize and it was really special for her, we're really glad for her. But it was great, the weather was great at Lock Lloyd and great partnership we had with them, but the Chamber really outdid themselves and, and again, uh, great kudos to the fire department for their part in it. Now, uh, also that, uh, I, I got to, and Councilwoman Peak, we worked the after-grad party and I think she drank a lot more than I, oh no. They only have, they have water. But it was quite an event, uh, it was really well taken by the class and it was a great graduation class and they were fun to be around and, and it was exciting that we had that event at the park. And, uh, I've heard people, I know Chief, uh, you want to get the microphone ready real quick that, uh, with you being there and this was your what year?
Thirtieth.
First one was nineteen eighty-nine. And we were talking about that, but where was the first one? First one was at Longview. Uh, they had a brand-new indoor pool and recreation area there. And, uh, that was the first one. Uh, since then, we've also had them, uh, in Warrensburg and in, uh, Liberty at, uh, William Jewel at the Maybe Center. We've had them in North Kansas City at their community center. We had one in Harrisonville at their community center. And then when, uh, High Blue Wellness was built, we were able to start having them here at home, so. And I've heard people that have been there say by far, and I think we may have said that, this, our place is the best place to have had it by far. It's pretty spectacular. Not only that, but, uh, we've been doing it so long now and, and with Troy Shaw, uh, working the technology, uh, it's, it's fairly seamless. The, the students, the graduates all come in, they're very orderly, they all, uh, a lot of them bring guests with them, but, uh, they're there for about four hours, uh, four to four and a half hours. Everybody has a good time and almost everyone leaves with a prize, so. Belton cares. And I know that, uh, Councilwoman Peak, yes, a big part and really loves it. I try to get over there once in a while, but it's a good deal. It is a wonderful process. Had a great graduation class and we're really proud of the graduation itself. Our graduation was uneventful, which is always an amen, so we're really pleased. Uh, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing I have tonight is just to remind everybody of our upcoming meetings on, uh, next one will be in two weeks on May twenty-eighth, uh, beginning at six PM. And then the two listed there for June on the eleventh and twenty-fifth. And that concludes the city manager's report.
Other business? Anybody? Councilwoman Davidson?
On Golden Pond starts June seventh and runs through June twenty-third.
Seventh, and, uh, what would we give for directions? They always say to get your reservations ahead of time?
Yep, so you can make reservations by calling eight-one-six-four-zero-six-nine-four-two-two or you can visit Main Street Theater, belton.com.
Okay, so it's June seventh?
Mm-hmm, June seventh through the twenty-third.
Through the twenty-third, and they'll do three shows each weekend?
Yep.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I was mulling over what you said about the retention pond. Had a couple of questions. Part of the money that, uh, that the companies pay to use the retention pond, it's supposed to be used for repair and, and you were talking about the wall sliding in. You know, we need to be looking at throw that money there to redo, do the necessary things that needs to be done on that retention pond. The second question was, are there fish in there? Should be.
Yes, lots of fish, I've seen.
I wonder if the conservation, I mean, doing a, a test in that? I'm not sure how safe it is to fish in that.
Permit.
I think people need to be looking at as a possible, another park area, almost.
We've seen a lot of fish, we were just talking about instead of fish, we had carts of fish. We had shopping carts that get pushed down the hill also.
Right. But we did see, yeah, fish and, I mean, the water quality looked pretty good in, in it when we were out there cleaning.
Well, and, and let's be fair, when, and some of the reports we have off your technology over in your side, uh, that we've talked about a two-hundred-year flood we've already had, which was seven to eight inches in two days. And we also had, in one of our, two o'clock in the morning, we had like two inches of rain in about thirty minutes, I think it was.
Right.
It's pretty spectacular.
Right.
And our weather patterns, I don't know, the weather patterns are changing and you have to be cognizant of the fact that you're here. What are they saying in Kansas City? The weather is already ten inches higher than this time, above the standard, ten inches higher already. So, interesting. Any other business before, I've had one more? Mr. Mayor? Sir? I was just gonna give a, a final update on the, uh, Cass Community Foundation, uh, Walk for Health uh, that was, uh, Saturday before last. We, we had talked about that earlier. Uh, ended up around four hundred and twenty-five walkers and runners that participated in that. Uh, it was a, a big event that went on out there and, uh, ended up grossing somewhere north of seventy-three thousand dollars. So it was a big event and, uh, thank you all for, uh, letting them have that again. Did you win that, Councilwoman, this year?
I did not win it. My mother was thrilled because she was first in her age division, but there were only two people.
That's okay. She didn't have to say that second. Wow.
I ran, I ran.
So you did better than, okay.
I, I know, she wore them, but I don't.
It's okay, it counts. Good stuff, but it was a great event. And I got to try to drive through some of the crowd, it was a big deal. Okay, I have one other, a request for a record fee waiver, you gonna, who's gonna talk about that?
Yes, uh, tonight Andrea Cunningham, our city clerk, is going to, uh, bring this to you. Uh, you have a memo that's in the packet. Uh, there was a request for, a sunshine request for information and then a subsequent request to waive the fees. And so Andrea, do you mind, uh, sharing the information with council this evening?
Yes. In your packet, you'll see a council information form. That's a write-up of what I received and what the question before you. According to state statute, only the city council can waive a request for record fee. Uh, so it's before you to ask if you would like to waive based upon the requester's information of what he's provided. Um, the city attorney and I spoke about this and he may have a few more things to add.
Uh, yes, the sunshine law and the city code allows the city council or the governing body, as it's referred to in the sunshine law, to waive or reduce a fee for a records request if you make two determinations. Uh, the first is that the, um, request is in the public interest because, because it is likely to contribute significantly to public understanding of the operations or activities of the public governmental body and is not primarily, and then the second one is, and it is not primarily in the commercial interest of the requestor. Again, this is all up to the city council discretion, but those are the two determinations that are to be made if you decide to waive the fee.
Can you kind of, somebody give a general resume, what this is about?
The requestor has asked for plot plans for Emerson Park addition, particularly the engineered plans that indicate the elevation levels. That request is in your packet, that's what our sunshine request looks like, our request form. Um, in that request, we responded back that it would be seventy-two dollars and eighteen cents for us to provide him that information. Uh, subsequently, he submitted two, three requests, I believe, for a waiver of that because he believes that the two conditions are reflected in his request. He believes he does qualify. I had initially responded that we did not believe that he qualified and in saying that he would like us to reconsider that, it's now before you to reconsider.
Uh, there's some discussion, what is it that they're wanting? What's the end game? They want this for what? Do you know, Patrick?
Uh, I believe it's in the documentation provided to you in the packet, but it is to ensure that the mail carriers know which routes to take, if I'm correct, between the rural carriers and the city carriers.
Is it the city carrier's route or is it the rural carriers?
And, and I believe the requestor works for the post office.
Correct. He states in his email on May eighth, "This determination will allow for more efficient operations of the local post office. The efficient operations of any government organization is of significant interest to the public and therefore I request a waiver of the, of the requested fee."
Councilman Tretzel?
There were two things that kind of bothered me here a little bit, this, the US mail is a quasi-government service and we are a government service as well, uh, so it's kind of in-between, it's kind of, what's kind of caused me the problem. Uh, but at the same time, I think you said that, uh, if you put it on CD, it was a lot easier to do this? If I read that right?
My response to him was in picking up the documentation, it would be more cost-efficient for him if I burned him a CD than printing off the documents because they're quite large maps and they would cost a lot more money than the seventy-two dollars. Seventy-two dollars is research time only, it is not copy time.
It's research time.
Questions, comments? Councilman Lathrop?
Well, it, it says he wants the elevations. Now, why does a mail carrier need the elevations?
I don't know. That was his specific request, particularly the engineered plans that indicate elevation lines.
Well, can I go, Sheila first, would you want to get on that elevation? Or?
Well, what we, what he wanted are the plot plans and they show the lot lines, that wouldn't really, and then we, the, the elevations, we had to show the street and storm sewer, the water and the sanitary sewer, so those all would show elevations. I don't know how that information would contribute to addressing and determining what houses are along the street because that information can be found on Google Maps to take a look at what house has been built. So I'm not sure how the elevations and the plot plans tie into that request. But we did provide that information.
Okay, Councilman Clark?
I said, please make no motion and it just dies, right?
I'm gonna ask in just a moment. I entertain a motion. Seeing none. That request stays a stand. You don't need to vote on that, do we?
No, you do not.
Okay. Next. The next is a motion to enter executive session to discuss matters pertaining to negotiated contracts according to State Statute six-ten-oh-two-one-twelve. Matters pertaining to leasing, purchase, or sale of real estate according to Missouri State Statute six-ten-oh-two-one-two. Matters pertaining to legal actions according to Missouri State Statute six-ten-oh-two-one-one and matters pertaining to the hiring and firing and disciplining and promotion of personnel according to Missouri State Statute six-ten-oh-two-one-three. And that the record be closed and the meeting adjourned at nowhere. Okay, forget that part.
The meeting will be closed.
Okay.
Records will be closed. Period.
And that the record be closed.
And that the record be closed, period.
Period, okay. You both hit me at the same time. Okay, you got a motion and a second discussion. Seeing none.
Mayor Davis?
Aye.
Councilman Savage?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peak?
Aye.
Councilman Tretzel?
Aye.
Councilwoman Davidson?
Aye.
Councilman Lathrop?
Aye.
Councilman Van Winkle?
Aye.
Councilman Clark?
Aye.
Councilman Finn?
Aye.